Welcome to the Town of Cordero Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 12th. Will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Commissioner Pashoyer?
Here.
And Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
And Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here, sort of.
And Chair Chase?
I'm here. Please join me in a salute to the flag. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. There's nobody in the room, so that would leave somebody online.
No one online, Chair Chase.
Okay. So let's get right to our business item here. Tonight, we're here to discuss emergency shelters. This is a discussion of potential amendments to Cordero Madera's zoning ordinance related to emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers. Martha, please take us down that road.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. Our staff is seeking input and feedback from you this evening on future amendments related to emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers. You will not be taking any action at tonight's meeting, and staff will return with a draft zoning ordinance amendment, which will incorporate feedback that we receive from you this evening. Next slide. Emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers are both defined in state statute. An emergency shelter has minimal services for homeless individuals. By state law, an individual cannot stay more than six months, and nobody can be denied access because of an inability to pay. And since 2008, housing element state law has required jurisdictions to allow emergency shelters as a permitted right within certain districts without any discretionary approval. And a low-barrier navigation center is a type of housing-first service that is intended to remove some of the barriers to entry of emergency shelters. And for instance, it generally includes best practices such as allowing partners, allowing pets, having storage areas for people to store their belongings, and also having privacy. And this is newer. It's been in state law since 2019. And since that time, state law has provided that low-barrier centers be allowed by right in mixed-use zones and non-residential zones that allow multifamily housing. Assembly Bill 2339 is a newer bill which became effective on January 1st, 2023. And in order to comply with this bill, we must amend our zoning ordinance to identify at least one zoning district that allows for residential and mixed uses, and we must allow emergency shelters in whatever district we identify as a permitted use with no discretionary review. And the district that is identified must have sufficient capacity to accommodate at least one year-round shelter with the capacity to provide for the needs of homeless individuals identified in the community. And next slide. In June of 2023, the town council adopted the sixth cycle housing element for the 2023-2031 housing element cycle. Among other things, the housing element includes a variety of goals, policies, and programs. And these are based on housing needs, community interests, and also on state law. And over the next eight years, these implementation programs will be a part of the housing element, the town's work plan, and we'll be implementing these various programs. So this slide shows three implementation programs that relate to emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers. And the program that is on the bottom, that were required by state law to amend our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, by one year from adoption of the housing element. So that is required by June of 2024. Next slide. Every two years, Marin County does a complete count of every person experiencing homelessness in the county. And the count helps service providers understand the needs of the homeless population. These counts are done in the winter months, and they're done in the early morning hours so that individuals can be counted before they start their day. The last count in 2022 was done on February 17th between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. And individuals, volunteers, are kind of spread out throughout the entire county to do these counts. There was an increase between 2019 and 2022 of just over 8.5% of the homeless individuals in the county. And that includes both unsheltered individuals and also sheltered individuals. And in Cordero Madera, the number of unsheltered individuals decreased from 39 to 3. And we currently do not have any sheltered individuals because there are no homeless shelters in Cordero Madera. The 2024 count was recently completed, and the report will be released in the next couple of months. And staff did speak with staff from Homeward Bound Marin. They provide, they operate a number of shelters in Marin County, both in San Rafael and in Novato. And Homeward Bound staff said that homeless individuals tend to move through different zones in the county, and they generally are moving to where there is shelter. Next slide. In January 2015, the town adopted a zoning ordinance amendment to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in the public and semi-public facilities district. These shelters would be subject to operational standards, and these standards are codified in Section 1816-320 of the code. And those standards are included as Attachment 1 to your report. Uses allowed in the public and semi-public facilities district include public schools, town, county, state, and federal facilities, places of religious assembly, and charitable institutions. There are 11 sites that are zoned public and semi-public facilities, and they total just over 66 acres. The parcels range in size from just over a half acre to 13.4 acre. And the public and semi-public facilities district does not meet the requirements of the recent state law because this district does not allow residential and mixed uses. And this slide shows the parcel zone public and semi-public facilities on the east side of town. And this next slide shows parcel zone public and semi-public facilities on the west side of town. Next slide. In October 2016, the town adopted a new mixed-use district and rezoned seven properties along Tamil Vista Boulevard between Madera Boulevard and Warnham Drive. And the goal of this rezoning effort was to facilitate and encourage mixed-use development within this area of town. The properties that are zoned MX-1 range in size from 0.37 acres to 5.4 acres, with the majority of parcels in the 2- to 3-acre size range. Now, this district allows residential densities at 15.1 units an acre and up to 20 units an acre for a senior housing project. And this district also does allow mixed-use developments as well. Next slide. In order to comply with AB 2339, the town must amend the zoning ordinance to allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in one of the zoning districts that currently allow residential and mixed-use developments. There are two districts that satisfy these requirements. The C1 zoning district, which is local shopping, that's shown in pink on this slide, and the MX-1, which is shown in the green color. Staff is recommending amending the permitted uses in the MX-1 district to allow emergency shelters versus the C1 district because the transportation options along the Tamil Vista corridor are superior to other areas of town. In addition, these properties are close to amenities and services that would be, could serve people experiencing homelessness, such as employment opportunities and retail. And also, the MX district has a greater potential for redevelopment in other areas in town. And this slide shows the parcels zoned C1 and MX-1 on the west side of Cordero Madera. And this slide shows parcels zoned C1. On the east side, there are no parcels zoned MX-1 on the east side of Cordero Madera. And the parcel zone C1 is the Paradise Drive Shopping Center, and there's a couple other smaller parcels as well. State law allows a jurisdiction to require that emergency shelter comply with operational standards as long as those standards are objective. The staff report includes recommendations on performance and development standards, and I've also included them on this slide as well. Staff is recommending that we maintain the existing standards in Section 1816-320 and modify those standards that are not currently objective. An example of that is the lighting standard currently is not an objective standard. Staff is also recommending operational requirements, as shown on this slide. The first two requirements are from state law. And staff is recommending that the number of allowable beds in a shelter be increased from its current limit of 13 to 16. The existing limit was established in 2015, and that was based on the homeless population in 2009. And since that time, the number of homeless individuals has increased, which is why we are recommending that the bed limit be increased. Next slide. So planning staff will further develop and finalize the ordinance amendment. I'm taking into consideration feedback received from the planning commission this evening. And we intend to return to the planning commission likely next month with a draft zoning ordinance amendment. There'll be a public hearing, and the commission will make a formal recommendation to the town council, who will ultimately make a decision on this. And this evening, we are interested in hearing the planning commission's feedback, specifically on the zone that staff is recommending be amended to allow shelters. And also, we are interested on your feedback on the performance, development standards, and also the operational standards, and any additional feedback that you have. So that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. Just to be clear, then, this is similar to needing to create a designation. Nothing happens as a result of this. It all becomes developer motivated or something of that nature in order for this to occur.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's similar, yet to the housing element. We're not required to build, but we are required to plan for it and to remove, you know, put in place zoning that allows it.
Okay. All right. So Commissioners, Margaret, do you have some thoughts, questions for staff at this moment?
The first thing that, and this is just, it occurred to me as I was just looking through the agenda for tonight, that the language being used might cause some confusion because we have so many emergency things that we do in an earthquake-fire-prone community sort of area. That when it said, when I first looked at it, it said, "emergency shelters." Also, as a child of the 60s, I thought, you know, we're all going underground or something. The language is confusing, and when it said "low barrier" navigation, I thought of actually elderly people in wheelchairs. It's just the language. I think if you want to publicize it or get feedback from people, there should be a bigger distinction in the language that people look at. And I think what what Peter said to begin with ought to be also pretty clear to everybody that this isn't something that Cordero Madera is going to build. It's something that a developer will come in and just say, "Is this land available to build on?" Because I think people would sort of get up in arms like, "Oh my God, all that's going to be homeless shelter." That kind of struck me. I didn't understand. There's one line in the report that says, "Since there are currently no emergency shelters in Cordero Madera, the town must plan on ensuring capacity for a minimum of three people."
Yeah, so that is, the three is based on the identified number homeless individuals that were part of the, that were counted in 2022.
Oh, okay.
So that's determined as kind of what our minimum capacity is that we need to accommodate.
Okay. And just to be clear, you said that if the the unsheltered homeless population in Marin County is mainly in Novato and San Rafael, is that correct?
All of the existing shelters are in Novato and San Rafael. And I would say a large percentage of the population is also in those areas, and I have numbers I can provide.
So Homeward Bound is not considered a shelter?
They are a shelter. Yes, they have several shelters in both.
But that's in Cordero Madera. We have a homeless shelter.
So that's not a homeless shelter. That's a permanent supportive housing.
I see.
Yeah, so the only kind of emergency shelters are in Novato and San Rafael. And they do, they range in size. I think the smallest one is in a six-person shelter, and then all the way up to, there's a fairly large one in Novato that I think is in the 80 to 100 range. And they indicated there's not an ideal size for a shelter. It really depends on funding sources.
So when they say, when you mention that a government building or an official building can, is zoned for a homeless shelter, that doesn't mean that that's going to be used as a homeless shelter?
Correct, correct. And, you know, we created a district where we allowed emergency shelters back in 2015, and almost 10 years later, we don't have any emergency shelters. So, you know, state law requires that we designate districts, but whether they get built is, you know, another story.
So in the history of Cordero Madera, I guess, going back, has the community room, the big community room ever been used in that kind of emergency or for that kind of, like a warming place or a...
I mean, during the PG&E power shut-off, town facilities were used for people to go and charge devices because there were generators.
I remember that.
But other than that, I can't think of it, you know.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. I wonder, from Margaret's question and the use of the words "emergency," yeah, it comes right out of state code, right? And it's tied to that relationship.
I mean, when we're doing newsletter articles to promote upcoming hearings, we can use some...
Clarify.
Yeah, we'll work on that. But as far as what's in the ordinance, they do derive, are derived from state law terms. Yeah, I was just going to read the definition from state law of "emergency shelter is housing with minimal support services for homeless persons that is limited to an occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person, and no individual or household may be denied emergency shelter because of an inability to pay." So it's, it's, I understand your confusion, and I think, yes, when we do notice, we can, we can explain a little better, but the terms, you know, we need to stick with are the definitions in state.
I understand that.
Questions? Okay, Valerie.
All right. So I think the first question is, how much am I allowed to ask and comment on since I'm within the 500-feet radius of the zone that is devoted for for the mixed-use development where the emergency shelter would be built?
I think you can go ahead and comment. We don't have a specific project in front of us, and we're just talking about a large area and changing really just the zoning designation. So I think you can go ahead and participate.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then, in regards to the term of stay for the six months, what determines what happens next? So if the homeless person cannot find a permanent residence after this six months, they are not allowed to come into the shelter anymore?
Correct. I don't know if there's, if you're move out after a certain time, if at some point you can come back. We can look further into that, into that question before the next meeting. But really, the intent is to find permanent shelter during that six-month period. And the reason it's limited is because they don't want people to stay too long and not have additional capacity for other people to use the shelter.
And then, I think in overall language throughout, it wasn't super clear whether the, if we are going to change the zoning, would there be any kind of guidelines based on the Cordero Madera findings as well as the climate action plan or in order to, for developers to consider when they are thinking of flipping the property into making it an emergency shelter?
So the use, there would be, there would be no discretion with the use of the emergency shelter or the low-barrier navigation center? If someone was proposing to construct a new building, I would think it would be the normal design review?
So this, this does create an opportunity for someone to be able to establish an emergency shelter with ministerial processes. So we would not be able to exercise any discretion. And there would be building permits most likely required, which are also ministerial. But if there's something specific related to climate action that you'd like to see them adhere to, that's where you have flexibility with the standards. So if there's something that you want any emergency shelter or low-barrier navigation center to have within their their operation or structure, that's, that's the purview that you have to be able to create those standards. So you're creating those standards really as a blanket for, for any potential, you know, impact that you would like to see alleviated with any of these projects.
So what would be kind of the process of creating these standards? Is it something that we would be taking part of? Or, you know, everyone in the town, like, what is that kind of the ideal scenario?
So there are some standards in the ordinance now and some suggestions within the staff report. So that's one thing we'd like feedback on, is if there are additional things that you'd like to see, you will have another opportunity to review this when it formally comes to you. But we're having this informal conversation just to see if there are things that we need to be thinking about.
Okay, so that would be, right now would be the time to comment. Perfect, all right.
And even if you are thinking of a, of a subject or a anything, we can craft that language and bring it back the next time.
Okay.
So you don't have to wordsmith it tonight, but just give us general framework, yeah.
Yeah, all right, great. Also, about the mixed-use program for this, so the, is is this ordinance is going to be for the emergency shelters, only meaning for the homeless use only? Or it will be crafted in a way that it could be merged with other public programs together? So for instance, I don't know, like the shelters for abuse, I mean, any kind of, any other social programs that could be kind of bundled together with this?
This ordinance is really focused on the emergency shelter and the low-barrier navigation center. Yeah, but I think some of those programs would fall into that, you know, domestic violence shelter, you know, our people who are temporarily homeless. So I think that would fall within this. And, yeah, some of the other programs. There's separate standards for six-bedroom or fewer board and care homes and supportive housing that's allowed by right in any residential area. So this is just a new this is a new state requirement in the housing law to make sure that every community has an area where with no barriers that a shelter could be established.
Just to elaborate, if there were uses such as a women's shelter or that type of emergency shelter, which is defined differently in state law, like Amy said, if it's under a certain number of, I think they count beds there as well. They are allowed in any residential district, and in my experience, that's helpful because they do want to have that anonymity. So you'll probably not even know that one is within a residential home within a, you know, normal neighborhood. So these emergency shelters that we're creating a pathway for tonight do operate a little differently, and they are for more of like a drop-in, you know, kind of night-day situation. So their operators tend to be different, a different sector of nonprofits, and they, they look and feel different than like a women's shelter or something of that sort.
Understood. And how, do you have examples of how Nevada and San Rafael shelters typically do operate? For instance, are people allowed to stay there during the day? Do they have amenities at the shelter for them to use during the day, not just at the nighttime for sleep only? Or do they need to get out of the shelter, hang out somewhere, and then come back?
I think it varies from shelter by shelter. A lot of these shelters do have kind of services and especially the more the low-barrier navigation centers where they're helping individuals find jobs, and they're helping them find permanent supportive housing. And at our next meeting, if it's helpful, we can provide a summary of all the shelters in Marin County and kind of the services that they provide. It does vary. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, good, all right. Daniel, over there, way down there.
Could you go back over the description of the difference between an emergency center and a low-barrier center?
Yes, so an emergency center, emergency shelter, it's limited to a maximum of six months that an individual can stay. No one can be denied access because they cannot afford to pay. And there was one other thing. You still have the state statute up, Amy? And it has minimal supportive services. And then a low-barrier navigation center, they tend to offer kind of more services, is my understanding. And they're focused on helping people to move from the shelter to permanent supportive housing. And then they also are removing barriers. So oftentimes, there could be a shelter that doesn't allow pets. And if someone has a pet, then that is a barrier for someone to go to that particular shelter. So they're trying to remove barriers that prevent people from utilizing them.
So does a, does a low-barrier center offer overnight accommodation and food service?
Yes.
So in that respect, it's similar to an emergency center?
It's similar, but my understanding is it is, my understanding is a navigation center is a form of shelter, but it has more services, and it's it's removing barriers of why someone wouldn't typically go to a shelter.
And the what we allow now and what we might increase could be either one of those.
Correct, correct. But we would allow both of those uses in the MX zoning district.
And are, in addition to Novato and San Rafael, are there other communities? I presume there are other communities that also need to respond to this state law? And have you, are you aware of what other communities like similar size to us are doing?
Yeah, so we did speak with, or who we worked with our housing element on, and she also is working with Tiburon, and they are adopting something similar. They are doing a bed limit of 16 in their ordinance. We looked at Larkspur's kind of draft ordinance. They haven't adopted anything yet. And we looked at that as we were developing some of our standards. But we can take a closer look at what other cities have done. Not a lot of cities have adopted ordinances at this. Um, but we can take a, a closer look at what other cities have done. Not a lot of cities have adopted ordinances at, at this time. Uh, but we can all, we can include a discussion in the next staff report that goes over everyone that does have an adopted ordinance.
Okay. And then, uh. The discretionary review, um. So can, are there, can you give me some examples of things we could or couldn't do in the operational standards?
Um, so Trace, what do you want to show? That's, that's like. Um, so a couple of operational standards were required to by state law, limiting it to a maximum of six months that someone can stay. And then also no one could be denied access, uh, because they are unable to pay. Um, we're had, we are recommending that the number of beds, so the limitation on the number of people be 16 people. But if the, if the commission thinks a different number is appropriate, then we'd love to hear your feedback on, on that. Um, we are requiring that the, the operator submit a plan to the, the town that would be reviewed. And among other things, um, the ordinance will include, uh, additional information on what this plan needs to include. But among other things, it would include outreach that they've done to the neighborhood. Um, that would be something that would be required.
So that'll be in what you.
That will be in the draft ordinance.
Uh huh. Um, so i- is there anything around the physical design of the facility that could be developed, that would not be considered discretionary?
I think this might be a good question for our attorney, but in general. When you're looking at something that is to be developed by right, this is your checklist. And then we really ca- as staff would not be able to, um. You know, work with the applicant on, for instance, the number of beds, the lighting, their, you know, some of these aspects that we're creating standards for. It's really a checklist. They meet it or they don't. And then it is something that would not come to a public hearing. So it would not come to your planning commission. There would be no noticing. Um, so it's really treated as if it were a, a building permit. Or something that you would not normally have discretion over. Um, but as far as the design component, um. There's, it's usually controversial because it depends on the, on, you know, how we write the ordinance.
Right. I mean, there, there would be subject to, you know, building standards and all that for facilities. Um, but you know, if you look at the, the, I think it's attachment. I've got one, which has the existing operational stand- standards. Some type of standard, I mean, uh, it's got a security. You know, it's, um. It's, there are some size requirements in terms of the interior and intake. Um, and, you know, having an operations plan and, you know, who operated, uh. The hours of admission and so forth. So I think. You know, you, you might be able to do some kind of objective design. I think it's hard because. You know, you could have anything from, you know, a four bed facility to, you know, something larger. So. Trying to come up with some universal design standard, that's going to, everything I think would be challenging.
And I, I will say, so, um, I just wanted to give you what the language would look like. In a, a way that meets state law and the one that doesn't. So it would not be good if you said. Must be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood because that creates so much. Subjective, um, power for the local agency. So we, we would. Basically be doing a design review to figure out, oh, is that compatible? The color's correct? Whereas if you really had some concerns about these districts and how they fit in, we would need to put in here. Um, this, the specific color palette or this, the type of landscaping that you would like, the. Um, so those kinds of really specific things. So we, so we and the applicant would just be able to check a box and say. Okay, green building or whatever it is. Um, so it would have to be very specific. And have no kind of subjective, open-ended opportunity for that kind of dialogue to happen.
Right. And at the same time, we, we couldn't be so extensive that it would present a barrier. The building, because that's, that's one of the key pieces of this state legislation is removing barriers so that, um. These shelters for homeless people should be built.
Um. Uh. So are we taking out, uh, the opportunity to build these facilities in public owned property?
We were not planning to. We would continue to, to allow that. And, you know, I think that district makes a lot of sense for this type of, of use. Um, you know, especially since the, the bed limit we're proposing 16, it's, it's not likely that someone would buy a two acre site and. Spend $10 million and develop it with a shelter because you just couldn't financially make that, make that work. So it's a lot more likely that someone. Would locate to an existing building and use a portion of it or add. A smaller building to an existing parcel for this type of use.
Uh, and. I understand mixed use. Are we also allowing this in any residential zones like multifamily?
Uh, the low barrier navigation centers, you do need to allow where you allow multifamily. Um, the emergency shelters, we're just recommending in the MX one district. And those are, are both requirements of, of state law.
Okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, Mr. Rizzo, you're there.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I think my first question is, is, are, are, um. So the amendment to the zoning is going to be, uh, the use itself. Um, will it be further defined, uh, within the zoning ordinance on, or is it just going to say emergency shelter?
So there would be amendments to the use tables in the MX district and the multifamily districts to allow, to note that this is a permitted use. And then we also will be creating a new chapter within the zoning ordinance that will include the various standards.
And that would refer to the, the, some of the state requirements and. Uh, some of the things that we were kind of discussing tonight, you know, we, we had the opportunity to review.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and can you confirm that this, this ordinance won't affect? Um, some of the MX mixed use developments as far as an, an inclusionary requirement? Or some kind of a requirement to build this type of use within a development? This is just a development that's allowed, correct?
Correct. It is not required. It's be permitted.
Uh huh. Okay. And this, like, my ne- my next question, sort of, let me just, there's a little dialogue before it. Um. So in the future, if the town develops a rental control ordinance, which I think is going to be on the board soon. Um, and a building owner has a tenant or the building or a space in the building as emergency shelter, will. It complicate the sale of the property or the ability to move the emergency shelter use? Because it's probably considered a protect, you know, a protected class?
Um, I, I, you know, I think a little of that depends on the rent control ordinance. But generally speaking, a homeless shelter wouldn't fall within a rent control ordinance because. Those folks are not actually.
Yeah.
Like, I, it, it's a little speculative at this point, but I, I do think it's about two different things.
Uh huh. I just want to make sure that a developer comes in, they, they're not, um, it won't be. Uh, discouraged if, if that has to be accommodated, I guess. If we're trying to also get some, uh, additional affordable housing in our, in our, as part of the MX, MX zoning. Um, will there be limited hours, um, to access or is it the intention to be? Lot more like an SRO type of situation where someone's got a room and a, or a. You know, kind of like a. We used to call them something else, but like an SRO, like a single room occupancy type of situation where they've got 24 access to outside.
Generally that will be in the plan that we're going to require as, as one of the standards. So they.
Uh huh.
The operator would have to show what their hours would be and what their plan is for providing services. Uh, but there isn't right now a limit on hours. Um.
There are sometimes limits on intake hours. And so, you know, there are, there are operational rules like that. That, and I think it really depends, means the navigation center is generally a place where people can stay. And get services and they're there for a while, whereas an emergency shelter. If you look at the definitions under, under state law, the emergency shelter is, is more of a sort of drop in and it could be. You know, I, I can look at San Francisco as a comparison, has some shelters that they just open it, right? People come in and sleep and then they leave in the morning versus, you know, um, a more navigation center oriented housing where you. Stay, you get services and you will transition into permanent housing or at least permanent supportive.
Okay. Um. That's my next question just is if, if there, if there does become a problem with, with some of the, um, the tenants. Um, because, uh, you know, in reading some of the, some of the stats, some, somebody could be, uh, have some mental disorder or. Or, uh, some substance abuse problems, um, is, do we have any other? Ordinances that, I mean, is there going to be something developed that, that the town could police in a way? So that we can protect some of our, um, residents if, if there is a problem with somebody? Um, not saying it can, it, it's going to happen, but, um. It could. And I think that the, there's definitely some concern out there.
Well, I, I mean, uh, all that we're going to be doing with this is changing our zoning to make it available. For emergency shelters or navigation shelters to open. It does not. It, it, you know, we would, we would have to have a provider come in and do that. But at the same time, uh, all the. The laws regarding behavior. Disturbing the peace vandalism, all those laws still are in effect. So yes, the police will have an ability to. You know, act as they have. I mean, I, we, we do have Buena Vista as a model that I know there were some community concerns about. Um, when it opened and, you know, it's been operating very well. So, uh, but, you know, but I think there are occasional police calls. Um, so there wouldn't, nothing would prohibit. The police from, you know, engaging in their regular law enforcement activities.
And the operators also have rules that the individuals are required to abide by. Um, so I think it maybe would be helpful at the next discussion to kind of include some additional information on, on what, what, what those are. We're just. Um.
I think that that's, that's sort of where I'm getting at. Like if, if there's a person that becomes a problem. You know, will the programs address it? Or is that something that's going to come back at the, to the community to deal with? Um, just to make sure that the, the people that are there really want the help and. You know, that, that abiding by the, I guess, the program. Since we don't really know what the program is, it's really difficult to understand really who the residents will be.
I, I think you're asking the question that's probably on the mind of most community members if they were to learn about this. And, um, I will say, just having worked in jurisdictions that had, um, emergency shelters. Um, it really is about keeping the operator accountable. So the substance of what's in their operational plan is really important. And, um, I've worked with good versions of them and poor versions of them. But at the end of the day, it's about, um, our enforcement capacity and, um, potentially police to be able to keep. The operator accountable. And so that is something that the town would be able to do. Um, and that would be part of our review when it comes to these standards. But if there are things that you feel we would need in addition to the standard that we have related to an, uh, operational. Plan, um, and we can look to at other jurisdictions and, and maybe even provide a copy of what that operational plan would look like from another. Jurisdictions, um, emergency shelter. But, um. Yeah, that's what we're looking for. If there's standards that you feel we needed to have, we need to have in place that we may be missing or, or if we're not quite hitting that mark.
No, I, I think by, by you guys crafting something that, that talks to the, talks about what. Kind of, uh, I guess requirements the operator should be abide by, uh, to operate in our town would be something that. I guess you would do a bit of research on some, how some of the other towns, um, are addressing it and get back to us on.
I'll just say one more thing is that, um, most of the nonprofits that work in the space are in multiple jurisdictions. So they. Usually have a lot of experience, um, working with emergency shelters and. Um, and so that will be part of that process is to make sure that they have that experience and. Their operational plan really represents their ability to, uh, make sure that there's not those external, um, impacts on the community.
Yeah, I just think that, yeah, there could be a lot of questions about this and it would be great to, to have, um, a lot of data to back it up. I think you, you will have a lot of community outreach regarding the subject. So, anyway. That was my last question. Uh, Peter, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Um, a couple of questions for you guys. So emergency shelters by definition. Is different than an emergency shelter for environmental reasons. They have a flood, they have a hurricane, tornado, whatever we got. So there's, those are two different things. Doesn't apply here. Okay. Um, by not having an odds toolkit or something, someone would come along and plunk down shipping containers and call it, uh. Emergency shelter, could they not?
I don't know if they would comply with building code requirements.
Yeah, that's the, okay, the key is that, but visibly, so somebody. Created an insulated shipping container and plunked it down. Um, that could happen, right? If they complied with building code requirements. If there's no design guideline for these things. So how do we get to saying? Something about design, um, and, but the other, uh, zoning requirements, height. Setback, all that stuff still apply, right? They have to follow that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So. But it could look like anything. It could be a box. So, um, not that it's likely to happen, but. Uh, a, one of these corporations could come in and say, hey, we're going to take the movie theater site and pull a big box. And it just gets done, right?
Potentially. I mean, with a limit of 16 beds, it wouldn't be a. A very large box, probably. But you're right, there is limited de- design standards that we would have, other than setbacks in height and.
So say they, somebody said, yeah, I don't, I don't care how much that site costs. A million bucks, we're just going to put 16 beds there. That's not the highest and best use for that piece of property. Um, and we couldn't do anything about it. They could do that, right?
Yes. So I mean, I guess that begs the question, if the commission feels the MX zone is the best zone to allow these. Um, the other alternative is the C1 local shopping district. That also meets the requirements of AB 2339. Because that district does allow housing and it does allow mixed use.
Unintended consequences. Um. So low barrier and emergency shelter. Initially are conceived as separate concept, separate building, separate facility, all that. They can be the same thing, can they not?
Hmm. I think the others, they're two separate, separate things and there's. State law defines what each of them are.
Okay. So someone could come in and say, all right, over here, I'm, I will build an emergency shelter over here and I have a low. So someone could come in and say, all right, over here, I'm, I will build an emergency shelter over here and I have a low barrier center. They can't say it's emergency shelter and a.
So, so one of the, uh, development standards we recommended is that they be a minimum of 300 feet from one another. Um, so that would likely preclude someone from buying a parcel and putting multiple.
All right. Just to get with it. All right. Other comments by commissioners, Daniel?
I just, uh, I have one more question.
Yeah.
You mentioned that they're redoing the census of homeless and what's the schedule for that?
Uh, so the count was done, I believe in, uh, February, early February. And I think by May, the report will be, um, will be out. So if, you know, if it says our, our population is much higher than what it was in 2020, 22, then potentially would need to reevaluate the recommended number of beds.
Uh, and but if it was the same and still three, uh, would that affect your recommendation about moving from 13 to 16 beds?
Um, it, it wouldn't in that overall, the homeless population has increased so dramatically in the county. And it really is, uh, you know, a regional issue. And, um, so I think our recommendation would, would still be increase it to 16.
This is an area where I think, um, it would be useful to get some feedback in other communities our size that are working on this issue. Uh, that would be helpful for me.
Okay.
Is there any reason why the count went down so much? Is it because the shelters opened up in other communities that everybody moved up there?
It, it's, it's so hard to, to say, um, but yeah, why ours dramatically decreased? I mean, that's permanent housing. But you know, that was, it started out as emergency until they sort of converted it to permanent. So I'm just wondering if maybe the opening of Buena Vista had an impact. I mean, it's hard to say it's the cause, but it might've had an impact. And also too, I think, uh, it's not uncommon for, um, individuals to locate where other, uh, homeless individuals are for safety purposes. Um, so I think, you know, there's in Nevada, there's that road that has a lot of recreational vehicles, um, that has, has increased. And I know in Santa Fe, there's a couple of, um, areas where there's high, high populations of unsheltered individuals. And so I think part of it could be that, um, people are going to where there's more, more services. Um, and where there's more, um, you know, other homeless individuals, uh, potentially for, for safety reasons.
Valerie, you had thoughts?
Are we commenting or questioning?
Okay.
Oh, whatever. Well, you don't have the, that, uh.
No, no formal, okay.
They're public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, um, so my probably biggest comment is that kind of aligning with what Peter has mentioned earlier is that if we do not have design guidelines set in place, um, what makes that area attractive in a way to the community? And since we are kind of thinking of the community and first of all, probably the homelessness is the issue of a community. Um, that unfortunately has been created. I feel like it has to be made in a way that it's for the community as well as sheltering homeless people. Um, this area unfortunately has been always sort of like lost in the hardscape, um, in the surrounding. It's not attractive to work, to walk by it. Um, it has high potential. There is a new hotel that is going to be developed there that potentially will bring community in. And I'm wondering if we could set some sort of standards for the development of that area that would maybe open up for more landscape greenery around so that people can, you know, gather together as well as having volunteering opportunities in emergency shelters. Um, I feel like our community is very welcoming and having time to give in, uh, to people in need. So it could create a great collaboration in between the community and, you know, the sheltered. And therefore will be less objectified, um, to create something like this, uh, when it's truly meaningful. And, um, obviously security is a concern, but I think all of like more transparent it is to the community. It doesn't look like a warehouse box. I feel like people will be more welcoming these type of, um, developments in the town. And if this area can be used, you know, by children, by mothers, you know, as a park that is next to the shelter as well as providing, um, a good environmental area, uh, to homeless people as well. I feel like it could create a great health benefit as well. Um, along with standards for, you know, the green building and maybe like well-certified building, um, and so forth. It just unfortunately, um, the area in Nevada, areas in Nevada and Santa Fe where they are, they don't have that. And you can see the outcomes of it, like the areas around are not maintained well, um, they're dirty. So how do we provide what we need to provide to people in need? But also make sure that it becomes almost like, um, opportunity for Cortumadera to set a good example for other towns. How things should be done in the right way? Because my biggest concern is, as Peter mentioned, like someone will come in and say, like, we are meeting the building standard code. And, um, those are minimal regulations that we had to go by. And, you know, they built what they need to build and it's, and everyone tries to avoid that area and no one walks by.
Thank you. So Margaret, anything else?
Yeah, I, I kind of, uh, tell me how this works. Some, a developer comes in and buys a parcel in the areas that, that are designated for this. And they build a shelter. Do they, is the developer the same people that run the shelters? Or do they, do developers sell the, the shelter to some nonprofit?
It's, it's generally nonprofit that are the operators of shelters. And in Marin, it's Homeward Bound is operates, I think, four to, four to six shelters. So they're.
They develop them originally? Were they the developers of those shelters?
I think in some cases they may have been, but in other cases I don't think they were. Um, so I think it would be helpful if we had follow-up conversations with Homeward Bound of Marin and, um, got a better understanding of their existing shelters and how they operated and how they came to operate them and who the, the.
I guess I'm just kind of curious because if they were to buy a piece of property in Cortumadera, like the cinema or that's millions of dollars. Do nonprofits have these millions of dollars to, to do that kind of development? For a 16-bed shelter? I, I, I'm, I don't see the, how it's going to work.
You know, usually it's, um, either, you know, it may be a religious charity. It may be a foundation. You're not going to have a for-profit developer buy property and convert it to a homeless shelter. It's not financially feasible. So, uh, uh, you know, you're, you're more likely to have some type of charitable enterprise, whether it's a foundation or a, a religious, a faith-based, uh, community come. And, um, there are, you know, various federal and state grant-funded programs. There's charitable donations. I mean, it's, it's not easy. So, um, for good reason, particularly in the high real estate markets is why we don't have very many in Marin County. So it is likely to be, you know, a nonprofit entity of some type that's going to put financing together to be able to do this. And I think Martha's right, they're more likely to buy a property, uh, you know, an existing property and, um, convert its use, uh, rather than build something from the ground up. And, you know, I mean, a lot of, for example, emergency shelter in San Francisco are religious institutions that open up their facilities for people to come and sleep at night. Whereas some of the navigation centers, the sort of supportive housing are more often, um, you know, nonprofits. In conjunction with like the city of San Francisco will find some vacant property and will do maybe a short-term navigation center for when, you know, there's plans to develop the property, but it isn't happening yet. So they might do something because some of San Francisco's facilities are temporary facilities while they're waiting for a property to be developed or so forth. But it's likely to be, you know, a, a charity, a nonprofit that would engage in this to the extent they can afford to in, you know, high value property areas like Marin.
So, um, in making some suggestions to put in, uh, I guess it would be the operational parts or rules, I'd like to, um, see what, uh, we could come up with or you could come up with to have some kind of green building standard or incorporate some kind of green building. Um, since so much of the town, we, we've put so much emphasis on that in Cortumadera. I'd like to see that part of it continued. And additionally, some kind of requirement, if possible, this is all, and if possible, landscaping around the area that, and a, a landscape and all of this with a plan for maintenance of it. Uh, I would like that, to see that. I don't, um, I, I guess I'm very unsure of, I, I understand the two different properties and I, I understand why that Tamal Vista area, that's what I call it, would be, um, preferable. But it seems like recently we're just kind of dumping everything on that area. Um, everything is just sort of getting, you know, stuck there. And I'm, I'm just concerned the people that live there. It's, it's not just a place that we just like can dump all Cortumadera's, you know, problems. So, so I guess I'd like some more information about what, what else would be available almost. Um, I, it, it seems that the other two you mentioned were shopping center areas. And it seems to me those have public transportation going to them and.
Yeah, so the, the two zoning districts that currently comply with, with AB 2339 is the MX district and then the, the C1. And the C1 districts, there's several parcels along Tamil Pius. And then there's also parcels surrounding, um, Manki Park. And those tend to be kind of smaller, smaller parcels.
And for a 16-bed or 13-bed, and I guess I prefer 13-bed because I feel like that might make it more housing-like rather than box-like. It might be better to look at the smaller parcels and they might be better incorporated into the neighborhoods. And there might be more of a, a, a reason to require landscaping and that kind of, um, thing around it. I understand that it's hard to put building standards on it, but I think if we could create some kind of, um, I agree, the operational kinds of things would be how we would have to put a building standard on it. And, um, and do that. And I think there also has to be a lot of good outreach for people in the community so that the understanding is that this isn't going to happen underneath their nose, because I remember the, the problems that came up with, uh, Homeward Bound here.
Valerie?
Um, one more question. So, uh, if it's rezoned for, uh, the possibility to build an emergency shelter, is that the only option that the developers would have? Or their developers still could purchase that as a for-profit land?
They would still be able to use, you know, any use that's currently allowed in the MX district. Someone could, could still, um, do any use. So it would not be required by, by any means.
Yeah, so I, I mean, to that point, and then, uh, I, I do agree with Margaret and that smaller parcel seems to be more interesting and unique in that way that they fit into residents a little bit more and they will feel more so like home rather than just a commercial property where people just, you know, coming in all the time. Um, I mean, we do have where those commercial, uh, zones are, we do have issues with parking. So maybe we just need to find somewhere where parking a little bit more available. But I feel like, um, having those, maybe we have more of those, but you know, having them spread out and in a more concise, um, environment, I think that would be more interesting. And then we could run for, um, you know, like lead for hotels, for instance, certifications. Or again, well-built certifications that would fit in the, that mode of, you know, housing element and making the buildings a little bit more environmentally friendly.
We need to take public comment on this. Is there anybody out there in the world that would like to comment on this?
Not online.
Not online, okay. Nobody there? All right. So, um, we'll keep going then. Uh, Daniel?
Yeah, I have, I have two more questions and then I can comment. Is there, uh, could the commercial property east of 101 be considered?
The Paradise Shopping Center?
No, it's, um, um, you know, the, uh, equipment rental and, uh, paint shop and.
So those parcels are zoned, uh, C3, I believe. And the challenge with that is the zoning does not allow housing. So it would need to be an amendment to that zoning district to permit housing as a use. Um, the general plan does allow housing. Um, and we have identified in our housing element that we will do an amendment to the zoning district so that the zoning matches what the general plan allows. But something like that takes much longer and it also requires a CEQA review. Um, so we would not meet the, the timeline. So we did look at those parcels and that was why we ultimately, um, did not make the recommendation.
Um, but the zoning couldn't be changed just for this purpose as opposed to housing in general?
I believe the zoning would need to be changed to allow housing because in order to comply with this, this state bill, the zoning district needs to allow housing and mixed-use developments.
Yeah, so I guess, um, uh, uh, you know, I would agree with that some of the other commissioners from Valerie's comment around how far we can go, uh, to define some better quality design standards that are, can be interpreted as non-discretionary. And I think, you know, for, I think the landscape is a good one. There's a lot of research and literature there about the health of a, of a green environment in terms of people's feeling of, of wealth is comfort and, and mental health. Uh, and maybe there's also something that would apply similarly to other physical aspects of the development. And, uh, I think you've already mentioned that you could do some additional research, uh, that would be useful. And, um, you know, again, I'd be, I'd be depending on the results of the, of the research, you know, inclined with that smaller development might be more in scale. And then that, uh, I'm, I'm interested in whether there ought to be more opportunities for public, public comment on this other than the hearing in April, assuming that you come back with this in April. That maybe just a planning commission hearing is not enough input on this. Is that a survey? Is that a, a public informational meeting or what? I think that's it, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. That's a very good thought, you know, outreach. I'll get for some other place, some weekend fair kind of thing where base the public, put Martha in front of the public. Then when I, I read here that this standard says that minimum of two hundred square feet per person. Roughly, right? So it says in that section, I, I guess it is under government code section. That two hundred square foot. So if you have thirteen people, that's twenty six hundred square feet of just rooms, right? So then you got to add the other required standards, which are kitchen and meeting room, all that other stuff. So you end up adding on to that. Where am I going with that? I'm just trying to get an idea of the size of such a facility, you know, and what's going to accompany it. So how do we define that in this design code or something, right? You know, what goes with it? What, what can be attached to the, the rooms for emergency shelter? Then there's the low barrier facility, which is different. So how do we codify what goes with that facility in some way? I, I think if we're talking about MX one down there and say that somebody walked down and looked at the marketplace empty space back there and said, ah, I'm going to lease that. You know, and turn it into a second story and so forth back there and I'd have to do the bathrooms and all that kind of stuff. That could take place, right? They could just say, we got enough square footage. We have plenty of parking out there. We're going to go ahead and propose a emergency shelter back there. Would that qualify, you know, when you start looking at square footage and all that kind of stuff? Seems like
It seems like it. And the, the two hundred square feet, that is the or it's based that determines this, the size of the parcel. So the site needs to be two hundred square feet times number of people. So I don't think it's the size of the building. I'm reading it incorrectly.
So I guess that's part of my question is that somebody could lease a piece of property or a part of a property to do this.
Correct.
Yeah, they don't need to buy anything. They can just walk in and say, we have an agreement with property owner to lease this and we're going to propose this. And then there are building plans that goes through the building department. Voila, you have a emergency shelter in a low barrier center or a low barriers, not both necessarily, one or the other. So I'm thinking that's sort of an easy road for that to occur. And somebody could do that. They don't have to go build much. They're just taking advantage of an existing building and plucking something in there. Worst case scenario is that there is a parcel that they buy. I don't, to your point, I don't know where they get the money for that, but some of these nonprofits tap into some significant money. Like the San Rafael, what they're building over there on if they're up there, a couple of significant buildings for senior housing and other things. So I feel like we need some guidance for what the facility looks like or how to put some parameters around it to say, this is what you can do visually. It conforms to some kind of standard. We have, would you guys be able to rob from the odds toolkit and place something into this?
We potentially can. I think that the challenge is we don't want to overstep and create barriers to the development of this use. So it's something we'll need to kind of discuss internally as far as, you know, how, how far we can go.
There's, yeah, the typical other, you've got some stuff about lighting and mirrors. Do they have signage? Required standards? Be typical to any other side. This Corte Madera sign ordinance. That would apply, yeah.
I think there are some basic design standards. I'm seeing that some towns have put into their codes. I think the balance is going to be, you know, is it, are we putting up barriers to prevent people from using this? So and, and that's really going to be the question here. The, certainly the legislative intent was we need these facilities. We want to make it as easy as possible for them to open. But, you know, other, and there are some basic standards for emergency shelters in terms of ventilation. And there are basic standards for that. I think that we can, you know, I think Martha and Amy are very creative people and, and they can, they can look at this. I, you know, I think, but we'll, we'll, we'll have to be careful about how we do it because it could easily be perceived if we put too many standards in here beyond health and safety, that it, it could appear to be barriers. But I think some basic design standards, I think the issue of outdoor space is a really interesting one because I think certainly anyone in any resident would benefit from having that outdoor space. And so I, you know, I think that would be one thing to look at. I think some basic landscaping requirements, you know, I, I think it does benefit the residents. I mean, we, we know that, you know, we're learning more and more about the science of exposure to nature and to green things. But, you know, I think consistency perhaps with just setbacks and so forth seems reasonable. But I think it's going to be, it's going to be a fine line and, and you know, we don't have a huge amount of guidance yet on this as a new, a new state law. But we'll take a look at what other communities are doing and see if we can, can't find some answers.
And what was the timeline that this has to be done by?
It's June twenty third, twenty twenty four. If it doesn't happen, I don't think there's any, any penalties per se. We do report to HCD every year on the progress we're making on implementing the housing element. So, you know, they are keeping track more so than they have in the past, but, you know, it likely would not be the end of the world if
Well, you guys got a gold star for your
That's right.
Anyway, so, you know, it's
And we can demonstrate that we're making progress. So I think that would, you know, be helpful if need be.
Okay, Valerie.
Another comment here. So I was thinking like not to create the barriers, but I wonder how we can work to think outside of the box of, to, to define how we look at the shelter in general. If there is a possibility to think outside of the box. And as an example, maybe we can bring some precedent studies. And thinking of some hostel systems in Europe, for instance, right? They, they extremely affordable. And yes, these are free of pay, but we could apply similar kind of design guidelines that they apply there. There are amenity spaces for people to get together. Communities invited to teach some, I don't know, art classes, some staff, like volunteering opportunities that people can come in and give their time. And I wonder if there is some kind of set of, again, that mixed use programming that can happen together with a shelter that can be great and benefit for everyone. You know, some senior citizen can come in and you know, communicate with the homeless people and like start creating bonds. And, and that will be also helpful to them as well as it will be helpful to our population here in Corte Madera. And just, you know, making it not a typical, just, you know, kind of governmental service or nonprofit service that operates very independently from the town in general. I just, I don't know, there are so many perspectives of how Europe started creating these hostels that are thinking outside of the box and how to make sure that the community is engaged in, and all of these tourist visits and, you know, all of the people that are staying there. And some of the low income families, they also using these whole hostels for that particular reason. Because it, it gives a lot of these programmatic elements within the housing itself. So I, and again, I, I don't want to, you know, suggest that we create the standards for it because it would create the barriers. But how do we reason it and start thinking outside of the box rather than just repeating what is not as successful elsewhere?
If I may, because I
Of course, yeah.
I, I love the way you think. And I think I, I agree with your sentiments and that I, I think it's difficult because in this ordinance, we have to stick with kind of our land use framework. And our standards are very much about the, the use and how it interacts with the community and, you know, potential impacts. So it's difficult for us to get into that range of opportunity. If the town, and this is where I've seen this come into play, if the town we're going to contract with a nonprofit entity to provide services, that's something that could be part of the dialogue. So we're not at that point and we don't have the, the homelessness problem that a lot of other jurisdictions have. But I think what you're talking about is kind of more on that operational plan side of things. But also if we would have jurisdiction on that conversation, if we were to contract with a nonprofit to provide services on behalf of the town, whereas here we're really just charged with providing an opportunity to allow them to exist and to cite here. So we can't, we don't have the opportunity to get into that kind of operational conversation. If that helps at all, kind of give context.
No, it does. But would it be possible with, like, if we do create a zoning regulation that allows that, would we be able as a town to come in then and to, as you say, like partner with the nonprofit? And, and, and then influence the operational, like, so not necessarily setting a standard for the ordinance, but, you know, being proactive and making sure that we do influence how this is going to be built if it is.
Yeah, I mean, the, the town did that with the Casa Buena group when, when, when the county announced the home key and the town did set up a committee to discuss operational standards and how to make the program a success. And it was actually a really wonderful community opportunity. We ended up getting people donating welcome baskets and, and gift certificates to, to restaurants and all kinds of stuff. So so really Corte Madera is quite a giving community. So I, I love that idea when we get to that step.
Mr. Rizzo, anything else from you?
Yeah, it just dawned on me. So like churches and other zoning could always, if, if someone wanted to go into that, would they have the opportunity to do a a conditional use in, in that zoning or variance or some sort of change of use if they found a building or something? I mean, isn't, isn't that still on the table? When we talk about where the zoning is going to be, I, I guess that's a question for Martha, like, I don't know, the church behind Pete's, if they wanted to convert their part of their building into a temporary shelter and it's not zoned for that, I mean, could they apply for something to rezone it?
So it would, so that parcel is zoned R one. I believe they currently can have a shelter that's six people or less. A shelter larger than that would, wouldn't currently be allowed since we're really just looking at amending a district that allows housing and mixed, and mixed uses.
Okay, but they could apply for it.
Yeah.
I mean, they could always come in front of us and apply for it, yeah.
Yeah, they'd be fine for a zoning ordinance amendment to allow emergency shelters in the R one district, which I could anticipate being very controversial in the community.
Okay. And then, and then Daniel had mentioned that, that site by Amy's, kind of that zoning area where we've got a lot of kind of storage units and things like that. Bringing the residential component in there brings the SEQA component. Is, is that why SEQA would have to get in? Involved there, whereas in when we're, when we're adding a zoo, a, a use to MX, that doesn't require a SEQA because it's already zoned for residential?
Correct. So if we amended a zoning or a zoning district to allow residential, we'd have to analyze that impact. And so it's not, it's not impossible. It just would take a, a lot longer to do and it would be more, more costly as well.
Got it. But that's a direction that could be taken if, if we got some negative in feedback from town council and also the community that that could possibly be something that whereas in this new use could land.
Yes.
Well, I, you know, I, all in all, I mean, we, we do have a social, there's a need, a social responsibility to shelter these people and that require assistance in their transition, obtaining the permanent housing. I mean, where it goes, I, I do think we're limited into maybe two or three areas in town that have jobs in walking distance and public transportation. This zone has all of them and maybe some other spot zoning around town, but not necessarily all the C one would comply to that particular use and some of the standards. But as, as far as I, I, I completely agree with some of the other commissioners about, I'm, I'm more concerned about the operational standards and then the actual look of the building. Because I do think it's probably going to be a tenant improvement of some sort and not a new build, some sort of repurposed building. But I'd, I'd be interested to see if, if we could put any, I, I don't want to call them restrictions or barriers, but some sort of guidance in what, what we would allow and what we would disallow if, if the use became problematic, like I mentioned earlier. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And one thing we can do before the next meeting is we can look at the other zoning district that would would qualify, the C one district. And maybe there's a way where we can allow it on certain parcels, but not other parcels, depending on size of parcel. So if that's something the commission's interested in, in exploring, if you think maybe it is a better fit in the C one district or a portion of the C one district, that would be helpful feedback. I think I heard from
Well, I'm worried about the, the health, like the C one, like most of the C one, if you go west, there's no health facility there. I mean, I know that there's, there's not, there's an emergency facility close to Pete's. And there's walking distance, the MX is walking distance to the train. So there's, I, I guess you could look at certain, I guess, aspects of the, of, or, or locations in C one. But I think as you get further west, it, it seems to be getting away from some of the requirements that, that we've been reading and, and, and some of the documents that you shared.
Okay, you guys have taken a lot of notes. You have some things that you're clearly thinking about. I don't know where that will lead you. But you've got something to redraft and reform, I trust, with this discussion.
We do.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for all your feedback.
All right. So we could move on from here at this point. So thank you for that. That is That is an interesting issue that we've not come across yet. And you're not just checking the box. So that's great. Um, at this point, we go to uh commissioner reports and I know Margaret has some things to report on. Do you have anything to report on, Daniel? Yes, you do. Okay, fire away.
Well, my reports on the town council meeting from uh a week ago or from Tues- yeah, last Tuesday. Is yours previous to that?
Yeah, okay.
Very twentieth.
Go ahead, Daniel, yeah, yeah.
So uh, I think there was one interesting item maybe for us on the consent agenda. Uh, I don't know, four G with uh, which was passed. Uh, authorized the mayor to sign onto a letter and supported the statewide mandatory zero emission new uh, construction building standard. Uh, I think we talked about that here and it's, uh, it's good to see that the council supported, uh, supported that. Uh, there were um three items, uh, business items. Uh, uh, one was uh, discussion of uh, release of a retainer uh, for the uh, sleep saving work that happened. Um, and uh, Chris Good, uh, who was the main couple of works contacts for all that work, gave quite an amazing report on all the problems they had. They had uh four hundred and thirty six punchless items. Um, and um, feel now that the work has, has been completed, uh, rectified to standard. Um, there was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in liquidated damages and uh, two hundred and forty eight thousand five hundred dollars uh of budgeted money that was not spent. And uh, it's a one-year warranty, so they'll be keeping an eye on that. So that's, that was pretty. Uh, and probably affects a number of us in terms of the work being done near our homes. The uh, the other one was um, an item to allow the city manager uh, to um, provide a signing bonus. Uh, in particular, it would give him uh, and maybe more opportunities in terms of searching for the building inspector position, which uh, we have been uh, it had a lot of difficulty in filling up till now, in that past. Uh, and then the last item was a discussion on the uh recap of the, of the um strategic plan workshop that the council had, and there were four items that uh, they asked to come back. Um, one was a zoning amendment for commercial activity outdoors. Uh, one was to revisit the parks and rec budget uh, space for senior activity center and ways in which to increase the diversity of the town council. And then um, there was a equity and inclusion work plan that was approved. Oh, that's it.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Uh, a lot of things that I didn't pay attention to, so thanks.
Yeah.
Cool. Margaret.
Well, okay. Um, that the uh, meeting uh, a week ago first had a business item, uh, and RJ had a presentation talking about um a project uh, in connection with um, the central Marin Regional Pathways Gap Closure Project.
I got that.
Okay. Anyway, um, the funding for it is in place. And there are three pieces, it has to go out to bid now. There are three pieces to the project, uh, as he described it. There's the uh Warnham Multi-Use Path uh Rehabilitation of that path and also a widening of the path. There was uh, in dealing with the two-way cycle track, and I wasn't really clear about what that is. Well, I'll just put that out there. And then there's um, uh, some improvement to the Pfeiffer Crossing. And um, and that was approved by the council. And then there was a report, and this took up most of the meeting, on the uh, progress report on the town hall construction, which is nearing completion after its original inception, which was six years ago, which is hard to believe, six years ago. Um, it is, and this is something we could be proud of. The first non-residential zero net energy, Nero, uh, zero net uh, carbon building in the county, in the area, whatever, but we have it first. Uh, this, as there will be a soft opening in early May. Right now, um, the structure is done, the utilities are done. Um, a lot of the inside design and outside design are finished and in mid-April, the furniture is coming in. Including, um, and if anybody is interested, I suggest they look at the pictures of the most beautiful um, meeting area for the town council and of course our planning commission. It's really, I was uh really taken aback at how it looks when it's all there, beautiful. Uh, unfortunately, uh, what they're, they asked what, I don't know who was asking, but more money is needed. Put it that way. Originally, in uh, twenty twenty two, the construction, estimated construction budget was twelve million eight hundred and four thousand. And the costs have escalated considerably. The range is now up to about thirteen point two to thirteen point four million. And that's what they were asking. Um, what was being asked of the council to improve extra funds from the uh Town Capital Project Fund. They were looking for a one point four million dollar authorization. Um, there were unanticipated uh, conditions that came up, which added to the cost of the building. Um, just the scope of what was needed, they want to put in uh audiovisual, a better security system, fiber internet and um a shower. Those were not originally uh planned for. The delays were ca- caused by very wet winters and supply chain uh problems and also design clarifications, change work orders, basically, which uh always add a lot. Um, there were some in the, in the origi- it was explained that originally um, they were obligated to go with a low bid, but when those things are bid and it comes in as a low bid, a lot of things are left out, like upgrades and deficiencies. And um, the bid was only uh based on very limited detail. And um, and so they need more money. And they also needed more money for the construction management people, which is called MAC five. I know nothing about them. Anyway, um, that's uh what they were asking for and it was approved by the town council.
Painful.
But no surprising.
But not, there was a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of discussion and wringing of hands for that extra money. But um, they need the money. What do they, you can't stop now. So I didn't see that they had much of a choice there.
Price increases in, in lieu and in pair with everything that is happening.
Right. Yeah, yeah. It is going to be an amazing building. I'm sure people will come from near and right. There was some discussion about the public art. That's going to be in the room, um, in the, I guess hallway, in the general spaces and it's going to be beautiful. And they're going to have new furniture, like new chairs.
Comfy new chairs.
Comfy new chairs that elevate.
Now, thank you for uh paying such close attention to that. That's good news. I don't think I even have to go back and watch it. Uh, no. I can just say, Adam, I told you.
Well, I don't recall that, but yeah.
Right, no, I, yeah. Um, it's, it's, welcome to my world, yeah. So, okay, Steph, do you have anything to tell us about?
Yeah, a few things. Um, first, just to begin, there was an email sent to three of you from our city clerk about your um, your term as a commissioner. Um, so just please make sure to respond if you want to and um, but just wanted to remind you that that's in your inbox. I haven't checked this week, but last week, I, it sounds like she hasn't heard from anybody. And um, so if you have questions about continuing on or con- concerns, please let me know. I'm happy to meet with you individually. Um, I know it's, it's a hard role to be a planning commissioner and we appreciate your service and um, you know, would like to see people continue on or want to continue on, that is. So um, and then just a few things. One, another thing that happened at last week's planning commission meeting or a city council meeting, sorry, town council meeting, getting, I'm getting tired and it shouldn't be with the time change. Um, is we did um, receive direction to be able to um be, become members of Association of Bay Area Governments. Um, so we removed our membership about ten years ago and have not been members and have been receiving quite a few benefits from being part of that regional government and organization, including grant, grant money. So um, from a staff perspective, it was important to us that we rejoin A BAG and the council agreed. So um, that's pertinent to your role here as well, that we're um now again part of that organization. And then also, I'm happy to announce that we were able to hire um a chief building official, which is um related to that council item from a month ago or so. Um, so he will be starting April first. So very excited about that development. And then um, one, one other note um that relates to housing element implementation. But um, the building that we're in right now had an RFP out to be able to uh facilitate ha- uh, housing of some kind. So they um put out a request for proposals to purchase the property here. And so.
Old building?
Yeah, so it's one of our housing sites and Martha's been fielding um lots of questions from all over the place. So we're hopeful that they will receive a um, a favorable bid and hopefully we'll move forward and um creating some housing here at the site.
In it, wow. Cause there are so many people that have their offices here.
Not, it's pretty vacant.
Oh.
Yeah, so I think their intent was to move forward and I know they worked closely with Martha and the team on the housing element process and this being designated as one of the sites. So um, that is our hope. So, and also related to that, um, Tracy's been working on our annual progress report for um HCD and that really looks at our progress towards um our housing allocation and also um, the implementation of our housing element policies. So Tracy will be presenting that to the council next Tuesday. And we'll make sure to send a copy to you all, um, so you can see what is within that report. Um, and I'll give you the, the short version is that we have produced six units in twenty twenty three. So that's the first year of our um housing cycle, um, which we're required to produce seven hundred and twenty five units. So um, we're not quite there. Yeah, but there are other things to report out on related to housing element implementation. So that, that will be at next Tuesday's uh council meeting. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Um, good news all around for the most part. So our next uh task here is to approve the meeting minutes. So um, anybody have any commentary on the meeting minutes at all? We can say, all right, let's say we approve those meeting minutes, everybody say aye.
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 Soon the meeting minutes approved. All right. So that said, let's go home.
Do we have another meeting uh in two weeks?
This is called stump the panel.
I, I don't think there's any.
Thing on the horizon for um two weeks out from right now, we definitely will have some um items in April. And uh, yeah, we'll keep you informed. And feel free to check in if you are curious about specific dates.
All right. Thank you. Good night.